Okay, everybody's all set. I'd like to call the order of the Board of Selectmen meeting of Tuesday, January 17th, 2023 at 6:34 PM. We all stand for the plate.
Let me lead this to the flag. United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, for the purposes of the next section, I would like to make a motion that we move into executive session pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A1, to discuss the physical or mental health of individuals without reference to professional conduct. We're also going to talk about under Section 21.4, the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto, and to leave executive session for the purposes of continuing our agenda.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's do a roll call vote.
Bone and aye?
Davis, aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye. And just for the record, Chairman Kevin Moss is not available tonight. All right, we're going to resume the regular session at 7:35 PM. First thing, I don't have any announcements. Is there anybody from the audience that has anything they want to talk about?
It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda. Seeing as none, we'll move into number six, which is a public hearing on the removal of a tree on Maple Street. Tree warden here?
Yes, sir.
You want to come up?
Warden.
Warden.
The warden.
I figured I'd at least use.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight on behalf of the tree warden, Highway Department, regarding a very large tree in front of number 71 Maple Street. It's a large oak tree. I would guess at least a few hundred years old, but it's in very poor condition. We had an arborist from Northeastern Tree Service come out and take a look. I'll read his report real quick if you don't mind.
Yep.
Okay. So, 71 Maple Street, Douglas, Mass. After inspecting the oak tree in question during my site visit on Thursday, 11/17/2022, it is my recommendation that the tree is hazardous and should be removed as it poses a significant risk to the general public, private property, and to the electrical lines supplying the surrounding properties. This tree has already had previous storm damaged limbs come down. There were stress cracks in the main trunk and carpenter ant damage in the main trunk as well. There was also mushrooms growing not only at the base of the tree, but also up the trunk of the tree, all of which are signs of decay in the trunk of the tree as well as the root system. Feel free to contact me with any questions or concerns. Steven Kidd, Northeastern Tree Service, his arborist license is 2572.
Anything?
Is that a picture of the tree? The one I'm picturing?
Is that one that's right on the edge of the road?
Yeah.
So that's the tree without any leaves. This is some of the foliage around it. The bottom few branches just get a few leaves at this point. I have several pictures. If you want, I can pass them around. It shows the decay, the mushrooms. This probably shows it the best. Every few years, we've been getting the tree trimmed, try to cut off some of the dead.
John, can I interrupt you for a minute?
Sure.
I messed up.
Okay.
We're supposed to open up a public hearing on this.
Okay.
I make a motion that we open up a public hearing to talk tree.
Second.
Motion's made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Bone and aye?
Davis, aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye. Sorry about that, guys.
That's okay. Do you like me to start over and read the?
No, that's fine.
Retro-latik? It is, okay. So every few years, we've had the tree trimmed, had different, you know, tree crews out there. And it's sad to see this happen because it's probably the biggest tree in Douglas, I'm going to say, but it poses a danger to the public walking by. People have called my office worried, walking their children, their dogs, you know, under the tree. The tree circumference in the middle of the trunk is 19 feet around. At the very base on the ground, it's 31 feet around. So it's a very large tree. So this year, after the complaints we received and meeting with the arborists, we decided it's time that we do something. You know, I hate to see it go. You know, I know the gypsy moss didn't help in 15, 16 because we're still battling that battle throughout the town. You know, again, stress cracks in the main trunk, carpenter ant damage, and the mushrooms and the decay. You know, the pitches are going around. If we make the decision to remove the tree, I think it would help with the sightline because it is kind of on a blind curve as well.
Doesn't look as pretty as it used to.
I agree.
John?
I've got a tree with mushrooms too. I guess that's a bad thing.
Yeah, I would say so, yes.
I learned something new tonight.
And unfortunately, the oaks have taken a beating in this town, you know. The past, I believe, three years now, we've spent $70,000 a year removing dead hazardous trees. I mean, our goal at some point is to start planting trees and beautifying the town, but we're still in the struggle of removing the dead hazardous trees.
I've been by that tree numerous times. It appears to be a big chunk taking out of the base of it on the street side.
Correct. Yeah, it shows right in this photo.
Yep, that's the one.
Yeah.
Someone hit it, you think?
I'm guessing.
Right on the edge of the pavement, so it's easy to hit.
Yeah, you can see the asphalt is right, literally right there.
Nobody else has anything? Here on 31. Well, I'm going to ask them, just making sure you guys are all set. Open it up to the public. Anybody want to speak? If you do speak, you need to just state your name and your address for the record.
Sure. Name is Michael Jubert, 76 Maple Street. I live across the road from the tree. I've seen it decay over the years. If it's got to go, it's got to go, but my only concern is the timing of removal for any wildlife in the tree, birds, things of that nature. It'd be a shame to take it down if there's nests in springtime. That's my only concern. It'd be a shame if there's birds that perish with nests. If it's taken down in April or May, whereas I understand concern to take a tree down that massive in March. So my only concern, sad to see it go. It does provide a sense of traffic control for that road. It's a different topic. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Can we time it to give a chance to?
Sure, I mean, we could actually get it done in the next few weeks if we voted in the affirmative to do this. So that would be before the birds.
Come back.
Unless we have a nice early spring, which I wouldn't mind that either, but.
Almost feels like spring now.
Yeah.
That sounds workable?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have anything?
Louis, 38 Martin Road. I just have a question as to why do we have to have the meeting? What's... Why can't you just take it down like all the rest of them?
Probably because the tree warden's passion for such a large tree. They put through a lot of effort trying to save this tree and work it. It's just, it's beyond the point of saving at this point, is my understanding.
Correct.
They wanted to give the public a chance. It's a significant tree.
I love the tree, and I have since I moved here, always watched it, looked at it, and thought, what a great big old wonderful tree.
Yeah. I guess they've tried their best to try to rejuvenate it, but without success.
Anybody else?
I do have one question. Bob with 38 Laht Road. When you remove the tree, will you grind the stump also and repave that, patch that area?
Does the road get wider?
So in the quote we have for the removal, it's also grinding the stump. So it'll all, the tree will get removed. They'll bring in a crane to take it down from what they tell me, and then after that, they'll grind the stump, and then we'll see about working that corner as well.
Good.
Dennis Martin, 20 Gilwall Court. So I work for another municipality, also a tree warden there. This is always a very difficult situation, and these hearings are necessary. I think it's law that we have to have hearings on public shade trees. You know, Douglas is not the only one going through these issues with dead trees like this. We spent nearly $100,000 where I'm at with the same issue, the drought, dead number on trees. So it's a very difficult situation, and it's never easy to take these big, beautiful trees down. Just wanted to make that comment.
Yep, thank you. Anybody else? Entertaining a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the tree meeting, our hearing?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Nope. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Roll call.
Bone and aye?
Davis, aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye. Want to decide on this street right now?
Yeah, I think it's time. I've enjoyed that tree myself. I don't want to get too emotional about the tree, but I drove by that an awful lot, and it is inspiring, or it is impressive, I should say. But I think it might be time to let that go. So I'd make a motion that we cut down the tree located at 71 Maple Street.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Roll call.
Bone and aye?
Davis, aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye. Thank you, John.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for everybody and your comments.
Say a little prayer.
Do we have a nicer picture than maybe for anyone?
We'll try to go back on Google Earth.
Well, it's 31 inches across. You want to save a slither, you can make a table.
Make a few baseball bats on it.
Don't leave yet, John. We've got a poll petition.
Yeah, don't leave. Next thing on the agenda is a public hearing for a poll petition relocation of poll number nine at Caswell Court to accommodate a new driveway and possible votes. Looking for a motion to open a public hearing.
Make a motion to open the poll petition public hearing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Roll call.
Bone and aye?
Davis, aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye. Anybody here to talk on this poll?
Good gentleman from National Grid is with us today.
Hello, Michael Fraser, National Grid, 245 South Main Street, Hopeville. Just requesting to relocate pole nine Caswell per the request of customer at 19. I think he's trying to get a driveway in and build at the property of 17. So just relocating it 14 feet to the south.
Outside the right way in, obviously.
Yep.
Are there any guide wires on that one?
I do not believe so.
No.
I think it was just a straight line there.
Anybody have any questions for Brian?
Anybody here to speak?
Yeah.
One thing, I'm just trying to go through those first.
Anybody here that want to speak on this poll petition? John?
Yeah, from the Highland Department. I did send a notice to Lisa. I do have a catch basin right there, so if you could stake out where it's going and let me know before we could drill, I just want to mark out the drain pipe so we don't put the pole through it.
Okay. Maybe it's not there anymore. I did stake it.
Okay.
Back in November, but.
All right. I just want to be sure.
Yep.
It's a 12-inch straight.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing as none, entertaining a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Roll call vote.
Bone and aye?
Davis, aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye. Want to make a decision on this poll tonight?
Make a motion that we approve the poll petition contingent upon Highway Department's final blessing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Roll call vote.
Bone and aye?
Davis, aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
Okay.
Next thing on the agenda is a grant acceptance for, there's two different ones, for the Fire Department. Douglas Fire Department Student Awareness, Fire Education for $3,781, and the Douglas Fire Department Senior Safe Grant for $2,077. Move approval.
I will second with the understanding that we received these grants from the Department of Fire Services.
Agreed. Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Roll call vote.
Bone and aye?
Davis, aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye. Next thing is a proposal to authorize expenditures of the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds for fire station HVAC improvements. Presentation's going to be by the town administrator and designer Howard Gerber or Bruce McRitchie, possible votes.
So, Mr. Chairman, I distributed the McRitchie report on the HVAC needs of the fire station to you earlier. So there was no need to have either Howard or Bruce travel out here tonight for that because their words speak for themselves. You also had the benefit of some discussion in executive session with various employees of the town. I think where we end up on this, the engineer's estimate, I'm going to round up to the nearest, you know, $20,000, $25,000 for a potential contingency. The request to the board is to encumber an amount not to exceed $300,000 to go forward with the HVAC portion of the rehabilitation of the fire station.
Any questions for the town administrator on this?
None.
Questions?
No. I would make a motion that we earmark $300,000 of our ARPA monies for the fire station HVAC improvements, as outlined in a meeting today and through the McRitchie study conducted November 28.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none.
Just for anybody that's here, these are federal funds that the town has received.
Okay. Does anybody want to comment on or ask anything about this? Okay. Motion made and seconded. Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Roll call vote.
Bone and aye?
Davis, aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye. Next thing is the meal expense reimbursement policy. It's the third and final reading.
If you want to stay on the ARPA topic, Mr. Chairman, you may.
Okay.
To...
Paul. He walked out of the room, just as we started talking.
But again, prior discussion under qualified topic in executive session, the notion there was to encumber 200, an amount not to exceed $225,000.
Yep.
For the purposes of improving school campus security.
Do we have any discussion on that that's needed?
I don't know if anything's in particular.
No.
Needed that would be added that wouldn't change anyone's mind.
Paul's better.
Do you need me? No, no. Do you want your money?
Yeah, I do.
Well, yeah, you might as well. If there's any questions. I think executive session covered an awful lot of them.
So I would make a motion that we earmark $225,000 of our ARPA monies to the school security camera plan as identified by the police chief and the school superintendent over the course of the last few months.
I just wouldn't restrict it to cameras, I would say, just school security improvements.
I will amend to say school security improvements.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Just the sad commentary on our society that we have to do this.
Yep. Is there any questions from anybody else in the room? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Roll call vote.
Bone and aye?
Davis, aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye.
So thank you to the Board of Selectmen. Thank you to Mr. Wojcicki. I know we worked hard the past probably four, five, six months on this project, so I'm excited to get to this point. But, Mr. Davis, you're correct. It is sad to think that this is where we're going as a society, but we need it for the safety, so I appreciate.
Have to be realistic.
Have to be realistic. So I appreciate the board willing to do this for the students and the faculty and staff. So thank you for your time and your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Did I do it on ARPA?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. I didn't know if you were going to do it during your administrative part because I looked for it and I couldn't find it. So that's okay. So the next thing is the meal expense reimbursement policy, the third reading, and third and final reading. We had plenty of chance to look at it. If there's any comments of any changes that is suggested.
Mr. Chairman, I did make a change. So at the request of the Finance Director, Highway Superintendent, under the topic captioned "Other," number one, we used to make people wait 10 hours, okay? So that was, it was a 10-hour shift after. What we wanted to bring this into compliance with state law and also set us up so that we can make sure that we can obtain items while businesses are still open and not in the middle of a storm in the middle of the night. So the reading has changed now as follows. Per person for every six consecutive hours of work after the last meal break of the work day, or six hours after the start of work when staffer called in to work for a storm event, whichever is sooner.
So that's the wording that actually got changed. You had the six hours before.
Yeah, but now we're just making sure that that is, we set the clock to the last meal, not the end of the shift. So if their last meal break was at noon, the way it was written before, they wouldn't stop for a meal until 9:00 PM, which is too late for our businesses. So the next meal break would actually technically have to be at 6:00 PM if they had a meal break at noon. So now the way this will work is 6:00 PM, midnight, and 6:00 AM if it's an overnight snowstorm, which is, it seems to only snow at night for one of the bigger storms.
True.
That allows them to plan ahead. And then if they come in, let's say they get called in on a Saturday, they get called in at 7:00 in the morning, their first meal break would be at 1:00 in the afternoon, these six hours.
Clear to everybody? Anybody have any comments from the audience? Seeing as none, entertain a motion on that.
Make a motion that we approve as town policy, the meal expense reimbursement policy outlined in our packet, adjusted by Matt, and supported by all.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Roll call vote.
Bone and aye?
Davis, aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye. Next item is the Audit Services Review and Possible Votes Request for Qualification: Solicitation of Document for Audit Services.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask that you pass over this item because I haven't had a chance to. What I'm going to do is grab RFQs from other municipalities. I just, I have not gotten to that, to that point where I feel like I can circulate anything I think is good enough.
Have a good night.
Good night. Was it something we said?
Yeah, that's right.
They heard the word audit and it all.
John, you're going to get a sandwich.
Now we can get really down to business.
Yeah, but Gene left with them.
I heard pass over.
Just on this, we need to figure out what we're doing, that audit committee that come up, that comprise that.
When I heard the board say at your last meeting, Mr. Chairman, was that you were going to serve as the audit committee. Now, the other part of this would be how much...
On the interim until we can figure out and actually if anyone will work towards putting a committee together.
Yeah. I, you know, those morning coffee thoughts or shower thoughts or long one-hour drive thoughts. There is some merit to considering that the audit committee would be, say, three members of the finance committee and two members of the select board. What that would allow you to do is the finance committee would be the majority. So when they meet during audit season and they review the exit interview and other things, it would be up to the members of the select board that were assigned to attend or not attend, but the finance committee's work would continue. So on any night when they had a scheduled meeting, they'd be able to hear from the audit group and then go into their regular meeting. But not to get overly philosophical, but at the end of the day, it's the taxpayer acting through town meeting, making sure that the executive branch of government is complying with rules. And the only expression of town meeting that meets on a regular basis outside of town meeting itself is the finance committee, which is appointed by the moderator to do the work of the finance committee in its absence, namely to write a budget. So it would seem to be their function as well to audit the executive. But the select board is a major policymaking board of the town, needs to have a presence in this conversation because you directly supervise me and more or less indirectly supervise the finance director, who are the two primary employees that are tasked with the financial reporting of the town. So that's a structure I might want to recommend. As far as the RFQs go, though, I just, this is, you know, I only get five or six examples and pull from the ones that I think are best, but then Gene and I need to sit down and tailor it to Douglas' needs, and we just haven't had a chance to do that yet.
So can we send something to the finance committee and see if we can get three members on there? That would be interesting.
Yeah, so at their next meeting, we'll broach the topic and see where.
Their next meeting's this week, isn't it?
I just got a meeting notice today.
Gene, you know when their next meeting is finance?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, next Tuesday.
The 24th. They're having a very short meeting.
Short because I won't be here to be long-winded. That's what Gene wanted to say, right, Gene?
She held back.
Was it 9:30 last week?
She's laughing too hard.
Yeah, I know. You're not supposed to laugh that hard.
I didn't think about it.
You're supposed to deny it. No, no, no.
So how do we get that on to their next meeting?
Well, we'll put it on their agenda.
Put it on their agenda to speak to.
So I would serve on that if that's the full circle as to where we're going. I will lend some time to that project.
If you need help, I would do it unless somebody else wanted to do it. I wouldn't be offended if somebody jumped in.
If you wanted a spot, I wouldn't be offended. If you wanted my spot, I wouldn't be offended.
Okay, so the, that's good on that, we'll move forward on that, see where the finance committee comes back to us. Next is presentation regarding various forms of economic development financing mechanisms, including tax increment financing and district improvement financing.
Mr. Chairman, I put this on because I wanted to distribute that report, one of the reports that Selectman Davis made available to everyone on district improvement financing. And if the selectmen wanted to describe the difference between TIFs and DIFs and your involvement in different statutes over the years, because we have to explain to people what it is, what you might try to do here.
Yeah, well, I.
Put you on.
Part of my legal career is doing some of these. I don't really do them now, but I've had experience in a lot of communities with TIFs and did the first DIF in the city of Quincy a few years back. So TIF tax, that's tax increment financing, and the basis of that is the town, and each town meeting approval dedicates some percentage increase of the assessed value of the property. And normally, it's to encourage development in a community and the tax savings are passed on usually to the tenant or to the developer of the property. So we've done probably, what, three or four in the history of the town to encourage small, pretty small deals to develop their property and give them incentive to make it in Douglas and, you know, show we're business friendly, et cetera. How it might be relevant to the financing of infrastructure, which we're gonna need for other developments in the town, is that it's possible to use a portion of the tax revenues to reimburse a developer if they were to fund some capital improvements. So it's a mechanism to sort of get back even, make it easy for the developer to assist us. So that's one possibility. Then the other program is district improvement financing, and that's where the community designates an area of the community as a DIF district. And similar to TIF, the incremental increases in property values can be dedicated to, for the town to bond for improvements, and there are a wide range of improvements for parking garages and road improvements, water sewer improvements. So it's another tool that we might potentially use. And the trick is, what is the security for the bonds issued by the town? I think the only ones that have been done in Massachusetts have been general obligation bonds where the full faith and credit of the town is pledged behind the bonds. If you have a developer involved with, you know, a creditworthy developer, it may be possible that the town could issue it as a revenue bond, where the underwriter would look at the fact, well, you've got a building going up and you've got a lease for a tenant, and it's pretty secure, so the town wouldn't even have to give its credit. So that's, that's a possibility. So we're all trying to come up with the best infrastructure method to finance these improvements. And I think we have to learn a little bit more what the developers are willing to do and what their needs are. And then, I know Tim sat with me and we talked about some, some of these possibilities, so maybe if, you know, my Tim and I sort of could take the lead and present back to the board, unless everybody wants to get involved.
Yes, that's fine with me.
So I thought we would, we would do that.
Just hearing what you said, just the initial thought that came up, you talked about the town basically being a cosign, in that term, and using their creditworthiness and supporting it.
Yeah, well, if you can avoid, yeah, if we can avoid it, that's good, but.
No, I know that, but just hand me out for a second. So say we're in that scenario, how does that affect us for any other borrower? One of the projects, because we're talking about a highway bond where we have multiple water projects that need to be done around town. So I'm just curious, does that affect it? Is that a consideration that we have to think about?
Yeah, it is a consideration, but on the other hand, you're presumably generating additional tax revenue. So the, the bond rating agencies will look at the tax base of the town and how it's going to be increased. So you, obviously, we prefer not to have the town issue a general obligation bond, but if it's necessary, it could very well be justified. We don't, you know, all the facts aren't on the table for us at this stage, but you're right, you know, we would prefer to do that. So it could be done just like any other type of bond issue, you have a fixed period of time for water and sewer and road improvements that we might need to make. And, but we're trying to look at some of these more, let's say, exotic ways of doing it to take any burden we can off of the town. And yet, this is a major amount of infrastructure, probably we've got to approve for the second stage of our major economic development project. So we're just at early stages, I would say, Matt, right?
Yeah, I think we're still tossing around ideas. The principal assessor, Chris Pupka, there's a lot of experience using some of these devices in Oxford where he was, the assessor gets very much involved in these projects. We have a couple of hurdles to do a TIF, and one of them for, is that it really needs to be an incentive, right? It's that but-for clause, but for this incentive, we wouldn't do this project. And Department of Revenue, according to Chris, takes a negative view of projects that were already going to happen. So in this case, CRG is already deeply committed, they have a purchase and sales agreement on the parcel, and there's been lots of conversations about engineering, it's preliminary engineering, it's already been funded. So in that case, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't look like an incentive anymore, it looks like a financing mechanism, and that is not the purpose of a TIF. TIF is a, is an economic development toolbox, it's to attract somebody who might otherwise not be interested. Now.
It's funny, in other states, it's exactly what it is for.
Yeah, right.
To finance. And Massachusetts is a little different, because it traditionally has provided an incentive to a business to stay in a community or expand in the community.
Right. And we did very similar things when I was Economic Development Director in Monsocket, where it was a local ordinance that allowed the Economic Development Director to engage in tax treaties, but the tax treaties were structured as a TIF, and it just had to go to the city council for final approval. I did a lot of those. A DIF is a little bit different, but it might be more, it's more directly on point with what we're trying to do here, which is identify a part of town that's going to be substantially improved and the necessary infrastructure that will make that possible. And, you know, you can do these things through a betterment strategy as well. You have to be careful, though, about how much you want to tailor your betterment to the specific property that's going to benefit versus some of the other properties that will also benefit from the infrastructure upgrade. And another possibility is what Oxford, I think, defaulted to do is to accept a donation account, you know, a donation from the developer and then use the donation as a way to retire the cost of a project. The donor can usually be very specific about the use of proceeds donated to municipality. And, so that's one way to gather the funds. What we're really trying to do here, though, is for the public to know, is we're trying to backstop our financial strategy for this infrastructure improvement in town, because it's too much money for us to do the capital budget, for instance. It has a widespread improvement for everyone involved. So if we went up North Street with better infrastructure and there was existing areas, it's, you know, it's a dead-end pipe right now, it would be lubed, there's lots of ancillary benefits, so it's, for the long run, for the town, it's a good thing to do. But we can't count on grant funds like we've counted on. So to use Selectman Bone's phrase, we've caught lightning in a bottle. So we got big Masworks grant and a big EDA grant taken together, and then procurement, the procurement process, the low bidder came in pretty low on the sewer project, so we're actually not even dipping into the private contract, the private developer's contribution. So really, our, our match is minimized, right, on the Masworks side. We're using Masworks to match EDA, so it all leveraged out real great. There's no guarantee that the next time you apply for a grant, you're gonna get that money. And because bonding requires extensive town meeting involvement, we just can't have everything driven by the grant application deadline. We need to have the financing secured to make sure that the developer does follow.
The other financing tool is this Chapter 23 L, where the bonds are not issued by the town, but they're issued by mass development, and usually would be secured by a betterment fee on the property. And potentially, those could be sold, because the underwriter would look at the creditworthiness of the developer and ability to do the project. So there's, there's at least three possibilities that we should look at. And what we need to do is to speak to our developer partners and see what they, what they are willing to contribute, so to speak. But thank you for putting this on the agenda.
Yeah, as you pointed out, at the beginning stage, just bringing this information out, get all the ideas out there, so we can do exactly what we're willing to talk about.
We want to be ready to capture the growth, though, so.
Capture more lightning in the bottle, right?
Yeah.
That's it. It's kind of exciting. It's been a long time for that mountain to go across the street from Shell. It's amazing how fast we can move dirt when there's an incentive.
Money.
Yeah.
So if we're good on number 12, we're up to the town administrator's report.
So I will be out of town from Friday, January 19th, to Sunday, January 29th. The person who went to the special act, both my contract and the chief of police's contract, I have appointed him interim town administrator. He has all of the authority of the town administrator during that time. He will not be out of town himself, so this is your notice, so I give you a written notice and then follow it up with verbal notice at your meeting. We do this pretty much whenever I'm out of town, so it's a routine. Public Safety Radio Project Update. So this is the horse that we all like to kick, right? So the good news, there's lots of good news, and there really is no bad news. We are switching a lot of our traffic over from really old legacy Verizon copper wires, one of which doesn't even work anymore, to a fiber network that connects our transmission sites and allows us to simulcast Public Safety Radio. We had to set up this extended local area network, and when we set it up with Spectrum, they pointed it to something that doesn't exist. So a bunch of people tore their hair out all weekend, including some of our police department staff, fire department staff, our IT folks, as well as Spectrum and Marcus Communications. They finally figured it out. They figured out that Spectrum had set this thing up wrong. So it's been completely fixed and is now live. And preliminary testing is that the signal strength is gorgeous compared to what we're dealing with right now with the static and all the rest of it comes from the copper. So we're hoping, knock on wood, that that cut over continues on schedule. We have physical possession of all the equipment, and the last thing we're waiting for now is to provision some of the Cisco switches. It's down in the technical weeds, but there are three locations where the switches had to be configured. And as of today, Cisco set up our accounts and all the necessary authorizations. So we are on schedule by the end of this month, early next month, to start testing and do the cut over, cut over on the console. So there is a light at the end of the tunnel with Public Safety Radio. There's a small change order, which is gonna result in a small credit, very small compared to the size of the project, but right now we're ahead of the game. As far as an update regarding town goals, I'm gonna only cover the ones where we've been making some progress. So compensation system reform, compensation system reform has been on this list of goals since June, and we've made a lot of progress over this weekend and today. So I have an internal working team that consists of town administrator, the finance director, the treasurer, collector, and the assistant treasurer that runs our payroll, as well as Lisa Freeman in your office, my office, the five of us. And this is in lieu of the personnel committee, which, for whatever reason, has decided, a personnel board decided they don't want to do this, so they don't want to meet. What we're gonna do is, I have written up the grids for the different grades within each classification of personnel. So we have management, we have office assistants, and we have public safety highway, and really public works. So those three major tables, I'm looking to reduce the number of grades. So we have five levels of management. Right now, I'd like to move it to four. We have five levels of office assistant, I want to move that to three. We have five levels of highway worker, I want to work that down to three, because it's just way too many things. A lot of that paper just isn't even utilized. We have a path, a career trajectory that people follow, and they're not navigating Level Two Highway. We haven't had anybody at a Level Two Highway for years and years. They go from one to three to four. So all of those different grades, there has to be a meaningful and actionable difference between the skills of each of those four levels on the, call the management side, right? Then you take the job description for the various people who work in management roles around town, and you compare it to those skills levels, right? So there'll be a score that will result, there'll be some, if it's one, two, three, four, we're gonna look at the average score. So there may be folks who, when it comes to confidential information, deal with some of the most sensitive information of the town, and yet they don't manage anybody, they don't manage a budget. So at some levels, there'll be a Level Four, but in other levels, there'll be just a Level One. And we're gonna average those numbers out, determine how they're gonna be weighted. But that final average rating, rounding up to the next full number, I suppose, will be where we put those positions into the compensation grid. And then when we apply it to the people who already work here, we'll be looking at their length of service to the town as to determine what step they will be at. So that is the process we're going through now. The internal working commission, so my goal before I leave for vacation is to take all those grids and hand them off to the other four people who will still be here to review and start scoring the different roles in town against the job description. So hopefully, when I get back, what I promised the finance committee is that we would be presenting them with compensation reform in mid-February. So that is the goal, to get it on for special, actually for annual town meeting, first Monday in May, May 1st. That is compensation reform. The next goal that was on the list is to complete the feasibility study process for Public Safety Highway and departments. So we had a pre-bid conference on January 11th, it was very well-attended. So there was quite a few people in this room from a number of different firms. Some of the firms were here looking for a partner to partner up with, to work with us. So I anticipate tomorrow is the day the responses are due from interested parties. I'm hoping to get four or five solid proposals in from different firms, or groups of firms, to be basically our architect and engineer, our designer of record. Once that's done, I mean, this, your board has already approved the funds for that project to go forward, so that's what we would start to do, with the entire emphasis being on highway. The goal being conceptual design for town meeting vote in November, the special town meeting in November.
When we talked about the, the funding then for the design portion of it. We had $200,000, I think, that both came up with the spread number, but the design is gonna be substantially higher, correct?
One of the tricks here is going to be negotiating this fee, because that's how the RFQ was written up. We did not do a not-to-exceed amount, we said we would negotiate a fee. Part of what I'm hoping to do here with having this sort of house doctor or a long-term relationship is eliminate the idea of percentage-based fees. You know, I, once you, it gets a little bit ridiculous after a while. And I have a pretty good sense from a lot of the design work we've done for some of the electrical programs that we've, electrical projects that we're doing here, what hourly rates are like for the specialties. And what I'd be looking for is a time on task and a rate to estimate a fee. And what I'd be looking for is a time on task and a rate to estimate a fee. Something chokes, I choke on something about building a highway building, which is not the most complicated of the three possible, and then, you know, getting pushed into a 10% or a 15% designer fee on that, that's kind of silly.
And then if there's a steel strike and steel costs go up, the architect benefits from that.
That's right. So it becomes a ratchet, right? So it just keeps ratcheting up, and that's-
The school system's pretty complex, but the highway bond is-
Should not-
Believe it in schools, it shouldn't be because the costs go up, it doesn't mean that the architect should get more money.
Yeah. So that's where we stand with that one. In terms of these other items on the list of goals, we were looking for a full update of the GIS records for town incorporation to emergency response zoning, planning, water, and wastewater project plans. We continue to go back and forth with our dear friends with our GIS provider to negotiate the cost of the license, but Matt Benoit is very much on it, so the Community Development Department is working on it. And then, as we get into grants, a quick note that we will be applying for Mass Works. So while we are pursuing these other financial options, we're still going to go for a Mass Works grant because we have already gotten a site readiness grant for this project. So logically, if they pay for the engineering, they should be willing to look at funding part of the construction once it's shovel-ready. So Bob Manerick is tasked with that. As the last goal I want to go over, as this bullet points, is identify paths to address medium-to-long-term staff needs of the town. And we had identified HR expertise, facilities management, and potentially additional highway staff. As part of the compensation reform plan, what I will do is write a job description for the HR specialist and for the facilities manager. There's no guarantee that we would have the money and the budget to fund those positions, but now is the time to put them on the chart, to see where we would slot them in and what we would budget for them should we go out to hire, assuming benefits and all the rest of it, but.
In recent history, you've had situations where you didn't have a position, you had to create it, not-
Yeah.
Yes, presently, you cannot.
I think any reasonable person looking to do a personnel plan for the town, now is the time. We really do need HR support, and the goal there would be to share that person with the school department, and the same with the facilities manager. So the four school buildings and then all the rest of our buildings, we would be looking to have one person responsible for all of them.
Right, and help you control the costs.
Yeah, it's that long-term deferred maintenance and the regular maintenance plans for major mechanical systems, the things that-
What I mean about controlling the costs?
Yeah.
Just somebody that's familiar with all of it. You would still have your other people under them anyways.
Yes.
You would need your day-to-day people that are there, like you have a major decision-maker.
Yeah, somebody familiar with capital budgeting and long-range plans. So that's your update on your goals. The goals document is a living, breathing thing, so as we cross things off, there's nothing says you can't add to it, but it's a good way to have a dialogue about moving the town forward. And then other updates, I don't have anything else. We're running pretty good on time.
I would suggest that we-
I guess I'll go, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
The fire engine that Town Meeting has purchased is reaching the point for inspection, so the fire chief and a couple of staff are going down to Tampa to inspect the equipment before it's all closed up. So that's a new engine. Engine Three, which is our newest engine to date right now, that pump still needs to be fixed, so the, it's kind of a pain, but the truck is immobilized in its bag at the station, so it causes a little bit, you know that game you can get on your phone, right, the log jam or traffic jam, whatever, it's stuck there, and so anything that needs to get around it, it turns into a, you know, 29-point turn and all the rest of it. Everything we do takes forever. It's really kind of frustrating. We order a pump, it takes forever. We order a generator, you know, you can't even get a straight answer when you get a generator. We ordered a Ford Ranger truck for the building commissioner-
I forgot about that.
Last summer. I've forgotten about it too, right? So that was supposed to be here by now, it only entered the production queue two weeks ago. So we're still 10 to 12 weeks out just for a silly little Ford pickup truck. So our long-suffering department heads, you know, are trying to make do with what they have, even when Town Meeting's already approved funds for them to get things fixed, it's just taking a long time. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
I would make a recommendation that we skip over to minutes where I was absent, and you only have two members here to vote on the minutes. That leads us to Executive Session.
Are we doing that, absent the full board?
Yeah, because I don't think there's going to be, the topics are still valid for Executive Session, but there's nothing major here. Five minutes to six minutes.
All right, well, I will make a motion that we move into Executive Session to consider the purchase exchange lease or value, lease or value of real property, and to also conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiations with non-unit personnel, and then to leave Executive Session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Second, now?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Bonin, aye.
He was aye.
Fitzpatrick, aye.